I do the same car every day.
Is it?
Yeah, because I used to drive a long time ago. I used to ask Mr. Wolf, "How can we stop consuming that?" It was right outside my window when I got around.
Oh yeah, make your windows shut. Good evening. Everybody's ready, we'll be started. We're here for a work session. Today is Tuesday, April 7th. And we're gonna have a work session. It says there are audit committee meetings, is that correct? That's a misprint, isn't it? I don't see it. Okie dokie, well, we'll do the pledge of allegiance and get the meeting started. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we would like to have a moment of silence to honor our military firefighters, sheriff's deputies, and road workers as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Okay, roll call Tracy, please.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Trustee Mann.
Present.
Okay, uh, we got any own business to discuss? You guys got anything? Okay, then, I'd start. So, um, I have an issue with, um, I can't remember the exact Sunday, I would say two Sundays ago, I had a phone call, that the gate at the road garage was sitting light open. So, I went over there, and yeah, it was. And I went through the buildings, not that they've been disturbed or anything, but, you know, if we had access to the cameras, we could see what had happened. And I'm not sure why the cameras got turned off. I want to replay a recording from a previous meeting. And, uh, we'll kind of get it started here. If I can get this to play.
Um, I was talking about security cameras. Everybody has them. A lot of them, I do a lot of them, I have several of them out. It's probably on the place these days. The issue is that they're difficult. They're not letting them get in. This is why we're related to the fire department's investigations. Um, we had the security cameras changed. Um, this later was basically the first security cameras that Steve Wolf. So then, later the monkey denied that we had access to it. So, if nobody has access to the cameras, why do we have it? We need to have it at a good point, where they eventually call us, we find, we see, we see what's going on. Uh, like it needs to be changed. Um, if nobody has security cameras, you're not that, uh, the trustees, the department has to reopen this service. We use this service, we put it off. It was turned off because it's our opinion that tech staff who believes reasons and great, uh, is a means to try to eavesdrop on the security trustees. Uh, I'm not sure what we do with the work, we didn't watch them. But, um, it was just, uh, David, I think he was ashamed back then. At least, so...
Okay, well, I can't open up that. I mean, just, I made that comment, nothing was ever done. You know, then, I think it was after the last meeting, we sat out in the parking lot and watched a meeting after a meeting over the corner over here of the administration building. We saw Rory and Jim and Steve sit over in the corner table over there and have a meeting after the meeting. So, I just didn't understand why you don't have the cameras on then. So, when I even made a public records request, I still would not receive on some camera action that happened back when these cameras were turned off. So, um, we need to do something, Jim. These cameras need turned on.
Well, first of all, it's really bothering you that you don't have access to the cameras. You must be the one that needs that access to spy on all the employees. Now, going to the road garage incident, did you file a police report? Did you notify the sheriff?
Nope.
Okay. So, you just complained about it. How do we know the gate was really open? Did you take a picture?
Well, I guess I'm lying, Jim. I'm like Steve, I'm just going to just make up something up.
Okay, so...
No, let's don't complain, let's don't talk about the cameras. Let's talk about, you know, the fact that you think I'm lying.
No, you're here about talking about cameras, okay? It's pretty simple. If you have a incident, and you want it investigated, then you fill out, there's a paper trail to access this. Not this willy-nilly, chief wants to check and make sure his car is still there. No. There's gotta be a paper trail on why you need to violate an employee's rights and snooze at will from your phone. And on top of that, you don't even use it, you don't even use it to see whether or not employees are showing up to work on time. They've tried to do that. But, we have a computer down at the road garage to, they should be able to log in. How that computer got broke, I don't know. So...
So, why don't we use the cameras? Why don't we have the cameras on? So, Steve's over the road department, he can see it.
Well, we put, we put...
No, we can't turn the cameras on.
Okay. When we, when we locked down the camera system...
Wonder why we don't get along?
Okay. You were the one that was most upset.
You did behind my back, because you two went behind closed doors and made that decision. I got it on video, dude. You guys...
I'm over IT.
I don't give, I don't care.
I'm over IT.
How you did it.
And then...
You made a decision. You did not, you did, you guys, again and again and again, do things. Don't involve me, and wonder why we don't get along.
And then you had, uh, so, if you did a proper written request...
I did one, I did one.
For the road garage?
I did one for the meeting that you guys had behind closed doors and never have gotten it.
I haven't seen it.
Tracy?
I'm sorry?
Did you see a public records request asking for camera videos?
I emailed them all to you guys, yes, I did. You just didn't read your email.
Well, you guys have obviously worked all this out ahead of the meeting, so...
We haven't, we haven't.
So...
Okay, so...
So, we ran the rationale by Brian, who basically installs these camera systems. The reason somebody should be in it? Somebody got hurt? There's a theft? There is an investigation of an incident? Usually it has a police report to go with it. What you're asking for is random access anytime for your little crew of people.
Well, you can't tell me, by on the street believes that the guy that owns Buckeye tells me that he gave access to Steve Wolf, you two, two like two peas in a pod. He gave you access. We all believe you sit there at home and look at it anytime you want. That's the belief on the street. So, you say whatever you want.
I haven't even been in there since we did that.
You had to be in there. You do it home.
I haven't touched it. It's been untouched and unaccessed. Buckeye can pull it.
So, we're gonna pay them?
So, whatever little rumors you're construing on the street...
Okay.
So, that hasn't been touched.
Okay, so, that's fine, that's fine.
So, I have a question now. On course to the public records request, I can't get your public records request because I've not been given point of contact to ask for those videos. There's several people that have asked for them, and I don't have a point of contact to give them. So, that's why I emailed...
Mr. IT, what's his name? Who should you get hold of?
Well, that's why I emailed the public request to you guys for somebody to take and handle that. Nobody's come back and said anything.
So, we talked about not having the right paper trail. We're having the right paper trail, it still doesn't get done.
An email? You got an incident to go with that?
I got public records requests to go with it.
Okay. Well, I'll have to look at my clock. I had Chief resend me some stuff because attachments weren't making it, so, seems to be a lot of problems with getting emails from certain departments.
Well, first of all, you can't get attachments on your cellphone. So, you need to know that right now.
I don't...
People are not getting attachments on your cellphone. So, you have attachment and you don't get it, it's probably because you're on your cellphone not getting it.
Okay, so, I guess that's gonna be a dead end. I wonder why we don't get along. I mean, so, there again, basically, you're saying it's an employee of, employee of, it's an evasion of employees' privacy. The cameras are all in public areas. They're not in a private area. There was one in a private area, I think it got removed. They're all in a public area that, that, what's, what's, what are we doing that you don't want video? Okay, well...
Well, you're videotaping me. I'm sure that's...
It's public media and you're taping it too.
So...
Jim, can I ask a question? Why do we have cameras?
Why are we paying for them? We don't believe it.
I mean, that's a waste of money.
Well, we got cameras when employee files started disappearing.
So, we've got cameras for the road department because employee files will disappear?
Well, we've had break-ins at the road department since we put in the cameras, so, they do serve a purpose. But, the main reason was when we did the lockdown of IT. And because employee files were coming up missing. So...
Okay, we talked at the ground, we don't get anywhere with it. Uh, you guys have any own business? I do.
Second, our new business is, is I need a hard panel to talk to our staff. Uh, changing of the leadership of the department. Uh, here across the publication titles. Compatibility of public offices and positions, four positions. It is written by the Ohio Attorney General. It gives seven questions of compatibility. Two of them, we're gonna talk about it by grade. One of them is definitely a problem with what we do, of the grade. Is one office subordinate or in any way checked upon the other? Uh, the administrator, uh, if you look at the employees, uh, what's your command, the guy that the road department answers to the administrator. So, that is a compatibility issue that has been stated by the position. I think I need to address.
We gonna address that one, or we will have one off too? I mean, what's the audit count? What are we gonna tell the state when you have a compatibility issue? The auditor who wrote the book on compatibility, what are we gonna tell him? I just mean, right now on public record, I was not him doing that, so I'm clear, so you two guys.
So, you're holding an opinion from Peters?
Peters is gonna answer my response.
Okay, so, you don't have an opinion from our own attorney? Just something you just Googled online and decided?
The Ohio Attorney General book. I guess it's a book, the Ohio Attorney General wrote that.
And you're qualified to understand that?
I wonder why we don't get along? Always an argument, always fight. I know you are the leader.
You opened the meeting attacking issues that we've already...
Okay, we'll do one more, and then we'll, then we guys will talk about.
Because the township administrator had to live in cooperation and control.
Hold on. So, this, I'm gonna start again. This is a response to why the change was made in the Road Town leadership back in the 1st of January. It's actually started by Dr. Warrior. He's asking a question, and this was Jim's response.
Because the township administrator had to live in cooperation and control over this. And then Mr. McGlothlin, I guess you were wrong, but, quote-unquote, said, "We don't trust the man, and they're not working that way." We're gonna eliminate the subject into the operation. And they're making the own purchasing decisions without bringing it to the table.
That's not being done today? Yes, it is.
So, just the man and I, we need to establish control of what's going on because our best way of that word is not to fix. A lot of doing right is paid for and doing this. You know, if you got a body, you have to prove that when you're working for you, there's not a trace of what they've done last year on paper. Nothing, not very good, right? Nothing that would satisfy the expenditures that they put in part of that department. So, that is a lack of cooperation amongst the trustees. But, we had to take operational control of that because our jobs and services are a street. So, you can disagree with the decision all you want. I know we got a lot of employees who are like the seniors to work and go. Or you're gonna write a check out of your tax dollars for forty million dollars to do it. So, if everyone had an idea, what are you talking about? We're not even, we're not really...
Any comment?
What's your point to claim that? Where are you going with this?
Because of what you complained about, why you took over roads, is still being done today. Not management of money. We're spending money, having things done, things fixed, we don't need fixed. We're having things, everything outsourced. Spending thousands and thousands of dollars, having things done we don't need done. And who is, who is watching the hen house? Who, I mean, I guess he responds to you. Who does Steve, who does Steve answer to before he spends thousands and thousands of dollars? It's not me.
So, we wasted dollars fixing heaters for the men to work on equipment cold weather. We spent dollars on outsourcing a contract to a contractor because you told all the guys to call in sick to make our administrator look bad.
What you're talking about? I'm not calling sick.
You want to circumvent safety features on equipment. You interfered, not only are you against that vote, you have actively interfered with the operation of the road department since we made that change. Okay, so, point, you called Steinke Tractor and told him to sit on that work order. And now we have the same problem.
You are lying. I did not, I did not do that. Show proof of that. I did not call him to do that. They called me, asking why, what's going on? You two are both full of manure.
Prove it, Mr. McGlothlin. You got your tapes, you got your video, okay? But, when we get that work order, work order back from Steinke?
For the bearing?
Those, those are issues that were ignored.
It had been ignored for years. That thing had been running like that for years. It did not need, you don't have, everything does not need to be in 100% top-notch shape. Excuse me, Gene, I know Firetruck does and Analyst does. But, you can run a tractor on your farm, you can do things. Every bearing on it, that outside bearing on that thing had been bad for years. Back when Craig Howard was, was old, roads, it was bad. But that's a long time. It still worked, you washed it. But, okay, they spend thousands of dollars and get it fixed. They spend thousands of dollars and have a later, lower radiator hose fixed. That was a thousand, that was 300. You know, just time and time again, we're sending the mowers out to have all the maintenance done on it. It's doing it in-house.
If the same person was running that equipment every day, all the day, your project might work. But, when you've got a random set of employees in and out of that equipment all the time, let's talk about the tractor. You originally wanted to save dollars by patching up a radiator. However, we made a decision to buy a new one because, based on my experience being in the equipment business for 10 years and knowing how employees treat equipment, somebody's gonna run that thing too hot, and next thing you know, the township's gonna have to buy a new engine for a $100,000 tractor.
What radiator are we speaking with?
The radiator on the new Holland. Okay? So, that was a farm fix that we overrode because it's too risky. So, you got a bearing. So, you, you're comfortable putting an employee out on the street with a piece of equipment that's not working properly? What about the liability? I know you like digging up holes without insurance and all that.
We go again, lies.
You never provided that to the township.
They don't have to provide anything to you. I'm not providing you nothing, buddy.
So, by virtue of trustee, you, you can just make up your rules as you go? The small business approach?
Small business approach keeps us in business. You act like we own the printing press with money. Just keep spending it.
We're actually saving money in the head.
Yeah, okay. Any other own business?
I have some.
Okay, Tracy.
This has been a ongoing issue. Um, with the receipt of, I send out invoices probably practically every day. Um, the fire department gets them back to me right, right away. Steve holds all the bills until one point in time, I get like 20 of them the day before the meeting. And then, you guys have to sign them. If you don't sign them today, you gotta wait two weeks, or I gotta call you guys in, and I have to keep calling, keep calling you in. Some are already late. When I send them out, some of them only have two weeks. So, my issue is not so much that they give them to me and all, one pile, but that they need to be looked at because the dates, like, there's several of them in that stack. I couldn't do them last night and give them all to you. That are gonna be due, uh, due before I can get them mailed. So, I have an issue with that. So, something needs to be worked out. Steve can't do it, somebody needs to help him to be able to assign the codes to be able to get them back to me and do the purchase orders. That's a big issue. Also, the other issue is that they're shared bills. I said Steve has all the department's help for the fire. So, if the fire department is doing a bill and Steve makes a decision, he doesn't coordinate it with the fire department. And, um...
So, what exactly do you want the trustees to do? This is...
You need to, you need to get the state to do his job. But I just explained to you. You don't understand that?
So, the only way that I see to fix this problem would be to scan every piece of paper that hits this door.
It is getting scanned. It's already getting scanned.
It's getting date stamped.
No, it's getting scanned. I scan it. I scan it. She stamps it on the day, I scan it in.
And then, what I've seen in the past is you initial it with a date.
That's the past.
Two are different than what...
That's the past.
Okay, then walk, then walk us through. Okay, and explain, explain where you're posting it.
I just explained everything to you. You don't listen?
If you're scanning them in, I'd like to have a copy of them when you distribute it.
Um, you can get them. But, but, when he gives them to Adrian, she scans them in and gives them to me. When he gets, when he gets them. I have record, I have a paper trail of all of it.
I'd love, because I've never seen the credit card bill or the...
Well, first of all, that is not your responsibility. I asked you to get the guy who's supposed to be doing the job to do it. That's the first thing.
Amen.
You're micromanaging something that's not your job. You're not even doing your job. Do your job. I told you this the day you walked in this door. If you wanted to be fiscal officer, you should have ran for fiscal officer. Otherwise, stay in your backyard. Now, I need somebody to get this, this problem solved. If you're not gonna do it, I'll ask the other trustees to take care of it. Because it seems like you don't wanna do anything. You're always finding some excuse not to do anything. That's your mode of operation.
Okay, so, this is a Bash Gen meeting. Okay, what else?
No, no, it's not. It was a Bash Mike's meeting.
So, what else?
And I told you, I told you my issue is with the bills. What else? I'm financed. What else? I need that done, or our bills won't get paid on time, and why I have to pay penalties? And you think the citizens want our money to go to all these penalties? The voters don't want that. I just need somebody to do their job and do correct...
You keep it a running tally of all these late fees that you're accusing the town...
Do you think I want to do that?
Well, if you're gonna throw the stone and start, just like...
Wait a minute. I've sent you emails after emails after email. If you don't read them, that's not my fault. I can't make you read. If you can't read, that's not my fault either. I told you the issues. Are you gonna solve it, or you just gonna find ways to get out of it?
You got three trustees.
I asked you a question. I asked you the question. You're the one that's responding back to me. I need an answer from you, Jim. If you don't wanna answer, then tell me you don't wanna answer. Don't keep trying to find me ways that you're supposed to do the work for you, not for me.
Well, number one, how do you know they're late? Let's see your proof.
What's that?
And it says everything...
Excuse me, what did you ask me?
Let's see your proof that they're late.
The, the date on the bills said they're late. What do you mean, see your proof?
How do you know you're being honest with that?
I'm not a liar. Unlike the people you deal with every day, that sit in your lap and you listen to. I'm not a liar. I have no reason to lie. I don't know. It doesn't pay to lie because you have to continue lying. You and Steve oughta know that, but I don't think you do.
Okay, so, any other?
So what? Are you gonna not answer my question answer? You answered no answer.
I got nothing to work with. Show me some paperwork.
What do you mean you have nothing to work with? Do you not read the emails I send you? Or you can't read? Oh, you're illiterate. Okay, next subject. Next subject. I need, I'm sick of this. There's three trustees up here. It's not a Mike board, it's not a Jim board, it's not a Man board. It's the Board of Trustees. You guys are making decisions on what you wanna make decisions on. You guys are supposed to talk together. So, I was just on you because you spoke up about the bills. But, it's all you guys have to make a decision. Just because Mr. Mann is gonna sit with us on Thursday with me and Steve on Thursday, doesn't mean you guys shouldn't be able to get the words and know what happened. And it's not up to Mike to tell you. It's up to you to go to Mike if you need an answer. Not for you to wait till Mike runs to you, and the same thing for Mr. Mann. So, you guys need to work together. I can't work with you guys unless we all work together. And we're never gonna work if we don't work together. This is what works as in this. We gotta fix this. We have to fix this now. There's no doubt about it. If we don't work together, you can have your little beefs, but we have to still work together because the citizens voted us in. Whether we like each other or not, it doesn't matter. And I might be looking at you, Jim, but I'm talking to everybody. I'm talking to everybody. We have to work together to get the job accomplished. And, and you can have your beefs. Nobody has to like anybody here, but we have to work together.
So, you think your comments and McGlothlin's comments are constructive and they build cohesiveness?
Are yours?
I'm asking you.
I said, yes, are yours?
Absolutely.
And, and we don't agree with you. Well, I don't agree with you. I don't know if anybody else does.
I mean, the day after the election, Mike's exact words were to me, "I'm not working with you."
And what were your exact words to him? Because I was standing there when they said it. That's right. You said, "You don't have a choice." And what kind of cohesiveness is that?
So...
I'm there for four more years, and you don't have a choice, is what you said. So, what kind of attitude is that to work with somebody? You know, the little snide things you say to each other is also what causes problems too. And we're never gonna get along if we don't work together. So, say these little snide things, but work together. That's gonna happen.
That includes you too.
And I'm working. I'm doing my job. You don't do a damn thing. I know that from the day you walked in here. Excuse my friend, but you're pissing me off. You don't do anything but try to control everybody and make it your way. And everybody in this room can say that. Everybody in this room can say that. And now, I'm talking directly to you.
Are you done?
No, I'm not done. You're not gonna stop me. You're not gonna control me either. I, I could keep on talking because it's a work session. And Mr. Mann, Mr. Mann comes to the meeting for finances, and he sits in there and listens. Does any of you know what we talk about in those meetings? Only thing you hear is Steve's side. Because that's the only person that you talk to. the only person that you talk to, I'm the finance person, do you ever come to me for anything? That's the question, what?
Ask for reports, I'll read the reports you put out.
Do you know what you're reading? Obviously you don't know what you're reading, or we wouldn't end up being the problem we are right now, and you don't hear that here, what I have to say about it.
Why don't you walk us through the problem we're in that you're describing?
We're in the problem with the general fund, where we don't have money, and by the middle of the year, again, like last year, we're gonna have a problem, why isn't there not even a thought to put a levy on the ballot?
So, what's your solution?
Why isn't there not a thought to put a levy on the ballot, cause you assume nobody's gonna vote on it, you know why nobody's gonna vote on it? Because you not showing them that you can manage the money, we hear that every meeting, and I'm not just saying you, I'm just saying that they say the trustees, and maybe they're meaning me too, but I hear trustees. Okay, well, I'm done now.
Any other little business? Do we have anything, little business?
Uh, no, uh, Tracy, uh, when you send the email, that's, that means that you've sent that email to that individual that you wanna respond to.
I'm sorry, which email?
When, when you send an e- email about these, uh, bills.
Okay.
So if you send me a email, that means that you've already sent me the bill for that email.
Uh, it means that, you mean the person that's supposed to pay the bill?
Right.
Yes, in fact, it'll be, usually I don't send it to you till it's the second time I don't get the bill, I don't send it to you right away.
Okay, can you send me a copy of that, when you send the bill out first, yeah?
Okay, so each time I send that bill, which could be every day, you want copies of that?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just include you on there, in fact, I think I have been including you and Mike on those recently, I don't include Jim because he complains there's too many bills and there's too much email traffic going, so I don't include Jim.
You got anything in writing that says that? No.
I, I have a recording though, because I just listened to this stack of minutes right here that took me all weekend to go through, which is another issue.
Yeah, we know you tape record everybody that calls you, I know the game, Tracy.
Whatever.
You been in the mirror?
Yeah, cause he must have a mirror on him, cause I don't record nobody, there's no point for wait to take, it's better to record you, I do have another thing, but it might be new business.
Rory, you satisfied with it, you got your answer on the whole business everywhere?
Yes.
Are you also in the business? Chief, you good?
I'm good.
Hey, it's good, new business, I have nothing, yep, Tracy?
So, um, um, an email went out, titled minutes and audio recording question response, Adrian had asked a response from everybody on what she should do about the stack of minutes, that we got in our package tonight, that I think A, A just had some, so I responded back to her, and I suggested, one instruction, suggested that she just mail everybody...